Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganeck Communications. Meganeck offers a wide array of Internet services, including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganeck.net.
Good evening. I'd like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, August 8, 2022. It is now 6 o'clock PM, and I'm going to ask the board to take a roll-call vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, firefighters' union, minimum shift staffing. And to not do so would be detrimental to the town. I do so declare.
I'll second.
And I've got a motion and a second.
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelensky, aye.
Taylor, aye. And we will return to public session at 7 o'clock. To reopen the Falmouth Select Board meeting of Monday, August 8, 2022, it is 7:00 PM, and the Select Board is returning from executive session. And I'd like to just make one announcement about executive session. The Select Board has authorized the acting town manager to open collective bargaining negotiations with the firefighters' union in regards to minimum shift staffing. So please silence all cell phones, and if anyone is recording this meeting, please notify the chair. Thank you. And I'd like you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a proclamation tonight. I would ask Mr. Patterson to read it for us.
Whereas Massachusetts has a vibrant agricultural industry, which is part of the state's cultural heritage, and whereas Massachusetts has 7,241 farms preserving 491,653 acres of open space, and whereas farmers' markets create economic vitality for farmers and food producers and for the communities where the markets are located, and whereas farmers' markets are critical elements of a strong, sustainable local food system, serve as public and community gathering places, and foster a closer connection between the consumer and the food that they consume, and whereas farmers' market managers serve their community and support Massachusetts' farm and food businesses to provide fresh foods to the citizens of the Commonwealth, and whereas farmers' markets create healthier communities by providing access to fresh, healthy food to all residents, including SNAP and WIC program participants and seniors, and whereas the Falmouth Farmers Market has operated with great success for many years, and whereas the Falmouth Farmers Market has become an important part of the community culture that connects with a long history of farming in Falmouth. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth does hereby proclaim August 7 through the 13th, 2022, to be Farmers Market Week. In witness thereof, we have hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 8th day of August, 2022.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Recognitions?
I have two recognitions, Madam Chair.
Please.
First, I'd like to recognize Chief Smith, celebrating 35 years with the Falmouth Fire Department, which is pretty awesome, it's a long tenure, and also the DPW for the work with the Toters. I know that there have been some concerns about the Toters, but I think overall, they've rolled out really well. And we attended the, Nancy and I attended the Falmouth Heights Mayor Vista Neighborhood Association this weekend, and there was a lot of thanks to the DPW for the cleanup of the beaches, especially after 4th of July, repairing fences and taking out the trash, and just overall, lots of good praise for them, and I wanted them to be recognized. So thanks to the DPW.
Good.
Thank you.
I have one, I mean, you mentioned the Farmers Market Week, but I mean, our own Falmouth Farmers Market's doing really well, becoming very popular and very well-attended. And while we're talking about farms, how about recognizing Tony Andrews Farm and the work that Jeff is doing over there? The place is really holding up well through this drought. He's working hard, dragging that irrigation thing around all over the place, wearing himself out, dragging hoses around, but he's doing pretty well. I was there today, buying some produce, and he's got a lot of stuff on the table, so I guess he's getting by.
Excellent. Thank you both. Any other recognitions? Okay, announcements.
Madam Chair, I have several of those. Please. I would like to announce the Falmouth Police Department is doing Coffee with the Cop again Wednesday, August 17, from 9 to 11 a.m. at Peg Noonan Park on Main Street. More information at coffeewithacop.com. And also, the Police Department is holding their 21st Citizens Police Academy, scheduled on Thursday nights from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m., starting September 15 to November 17. If anyone is interested, they can receive a application on the Falmouth Police Department website, or by going to the Falmouth Police Department.
Thank you. Other announcements?
No.
Okay, I do have one, and it is from Dan Gessen, who represents Falmouth with the Assembly of Delegates. "Good evening, members of the Select Board. I would like to firstly take this opportunity to update you and the people of Falmouth on the passage and creation of the Small and Medium Grant Program by the Barnstable County Government this week. This program will allow for $5 million of the county ARPA money to be dispersed through competitive grants to deserving town projects, nonprofits, small businesses, and other local forms of government, such as town villages and MLPs. The final rules are still to be published, but information can be found at arpa.barnstablecounty.gov. There will be as many as 32 grants distributed across the Cape, ranging in size from $100,000 to $500,000. I encourage any eligible organization with strong ideas to help solve our local critical issues, affordable housing, wastewater, broadband, and public health, to apply for these funds and to continue working hard to make Falmouth and Cape Cod a better place for generations to come." I'd also like to just thank Dan for his informational updates that he sends to the board from the Assembly of Delegates, and for making this announcement for us here tonight.
I guess I'd like to actually add another announcement, if I could.
Go ahead.
This is regarding the email we got from David Eisenberg, reminding us about the Internet Essentials Partnership Program. And we really need to work on advising people about this. So if you're on some sort of financial assistance, and I think, you know, food stamps or any kind of assistance would qualify you for this program, I don't know the details exactly, but people should look into whether or not they can qualify. And you can get Internet Essentials Plus for $29.95 a month. You can get a basic Internet Essentials, which is 5 over 10 Mbps for $9.95 a month, and that includes equipment rentals. So there are some really affordable internet connectivity options that we might be missing, and a lot of folks at home might be missing, so we need to work on, probably trying to get this word out.
And Mr. Eisenberg is working with, I know he's working with the senior center, he's working with Linda Clark, he's working with the Falmouth Public Schools.
Right.
So I believe that he is doing his due diligence and trying to get the information out there.
Yep.
But I think it's a great thing to make that announcement. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else from the board? Okay, we'll take public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. It is not appropriate to use the public comment period to comment on any person's reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, disciplinary matters, or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions made are permissible. Any public comment? Ms. Gladfelter?
No, I actually have no public comment. I just want to say that we can't hear you. Those microphones are for exonerations.
You can't hear us? Okay.
I can hear you.
Yes.
And I can hear Nadja, I couldn't hear Sam, and believe it or not, nothing's fading in the background.
Hmm.
Okay.
I bet you can hear me, though. Yeah, I bet.
Thank you, Betsy.
Yeah, I had no idea.
I just turned the volume on. These actually should work for the microphones. Is it?
It only starts that way. I used to have the same problem.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes. Thank you. But no public comment. Okay. So we will look at the town manager's preliminary report, please, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I hope everyone can hear me okay. I had a COVID exposure, and that's why I'm keeping my mask on tonight. I do not have COVID. Again, it was just an exposure, so I'm fine. So tonight, we are starting with a request from the Water Superintendent Cahal O'Brien, who is here this evening to recommend adoption of further water use restrictions because of the impacts the drought is having on the town's water supply. Mr. O'Brien is concerned that the system is vulnerable both to water quality issues and water pressure issues, which could impact fire suppression, and he is recommending that the board adopt further water use restrictions to ban all irrigation except for hand watering. We recognize this is a pretty extreme measure, and we believe the circumstances warrant it. The Select Board has the authority to act on this tonight, per town council's guidance, and she refers us to Section 223-1 through 10 of the town bylaws. Should the town choose to take this action, there is a motion in your packet for you to consider. Next, we have on the business agenda, a report from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. We have received a written report from them. They are recommending the board direct the town manager and DPW to take a series of actions. We're certainly happy to entertain those, but I do recommend that the board defer action on these items for at least a month, so I have an opportunity to review with staff how these requested action items fit in with the rest of our priorities and our staff availability. The Energy Committee was scheduled to be on the agenda tonight, however, the chair is unable to make it due to personal reasons, and last I heard, there was not a second member of the committee ready to provide that presentation, so we will have to reschedule that. The next item is, and when I did skip over the public hearings, I'll come back to those in a minute. The Steamship Authority, Peter Jeffrey is the board's appointee to the Board of Governors of the Steamship Authority, and he has asked for an opportunity to discuss the board's priorities and concerns. Mr. Jeffrey has identified a number of concerns in his submission, written submission to the board, and I would just note, the board, as you are aware, but the public may not be, has received a great deal of correspondence over the past year and prior years from Woods Hole residents describing concerns related to issues including traffic, early morning traffic noise, the 5:30 a.m. freight ferry, and the health effects of diesel exhaust. The next item on your agenda is an update from Betsy Gladfelter, who is a member of the Conservation Commission. She will be providing an update on the next phase of the Coonamessett River Restoration Project. She has been working with Conservation Department staff members Mark Kaspersik and Jennifer Lincoln on grant applications, again, looking to fund the bulk of this work from grant funds rather than tax dollars. As the board is well aware, this is important work, and an important project. It has multiple benefits, one of which is wildlife restoration, but also coastal resilience. It improves the town's coastal resilience, it gives the water a place to go by removing some of the structures. I have had some conversations with Betsy and staff, and the only concern I have with moving forward with the next phase of this project is, again, DPW staff capacity. I've spoken to DPW Director Peter McConerty about that as well. I am recommending the board's approval of this, of the grant applications associated with this work, having had those conversations and assurance that we're going to do everything we can to have the grant funding and the capital funding provide robust project management oversight from the consultants. Also, just the nature of the work for this phase involves less roadwork, so it's less intense engineering work for the Public Works Department. The next item on your agenda is an update on the municipal light plant. We've invited Art Gaylord to come and make a presentation on the status of efforts to bring broadband to Falmouth through the municipal light plant. I would mention on that subject that the town meeting approved, and the Select Board filed special legislation to allow, to authorize a special election in November to coincide with the state election to elect the first Board of Commissioners for the municipal light plant. That has not yet been approved by the Massachusetts Legislature, and we really need that to be approved no later than August 29. The Select Board needs to call that special election by August 29 in order for us to be able to hold that election in November. So stay tuned for that. Coming back to the public hearings, Greg Fraser, MES Director, is here, and he will be presenting a set of rules and regulations that are proposed for the regulation of municipal dinghy floats and docks. This would be the first time we actually have regulations, and Greg will describe the need and how he arrived at those proposals. And then we have a new wine and malt beverage license application from Dilly's Grill, which has been reviewed by staff with no concerns.
Thank you. So we are ahead of ourselves a little bit, and as Chair, I can take things out of order, and I'm going to ask Cahal to step forward and do his presentation now, instead of waiting for him to do it under business. You're welcome. And Cahal, I've given you 10 minutes.
Thank you. As you saw in your packet, members of the Select Board, we respectfully request that you consider an amendment to the existing water use restriction effective on the 15th of August. That would give ample time to meet the requirements for public notice. It would have all irrigation of outdoor areas prohibited except for watering by hand. The ban on automatic and mechanical sprinklers is intended to be temporary until the demand for water subsides to the point that the system is not vulnerable to water quality and water pressure failures is determined by me. Basically, there's a series of bullets that was provided in the memo. They're all factual observations that we've been dealing with since the last time you were allowed us to speak. The current weather conditions have forced this, it's hot and dry for an extended period. That's a fact that we can't control. It's affecting the entire Cape. We reviewed each Cape Cod water district prior to tonight, just to see their status. They're all in the same situation as we are. The outdoor watering demand has placed us in peak demand for almost the entire time, so we're pumping out at maximum demand. On Saturday, I had to call Peter at home and let him know that we're really struggling to meet peak demand. The plant did never shut off over the weekend. It's causing turbidity issues similar to 2020. If you remember, we had a violation that we had to notify. We have not had a violation yet. We've been able to manage it using what we learned in 2020 to adjust, but we now do up to eight yard tests a day to keep that water safe for the public. In peak demand mode, we rely on the pumps at the plant and the wells for fire protection, meaning that if a pump fails, there could be an immediate drop in pressure. So rather than relying on gravity, we're currently relying on mechanical systems for the majority of our 24-hour cycles to meet our demand. This is not sustainable and exposes us to potential fire flow and water quality issues. A huge concern we have is if with this dry, hot weather, we have any incidents. We can't afford to have anything else fail, so we thought it was our duty to report that to you and request this additional, very serious step.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
Looking at the language from Mr. O'Brien, it says, "The declaration, this will, restrictions adopted will apply to all consumers without regard to use, regard to the source of the water supply." Does that infer that we're telling people with their own private wells not to use the irrigation?
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes, please.
So that is from the bylaw. I don't know that it's necessarily the water superintendent's recommendation, but again, that is the language in the bylaw as to how the restrictions are applied. I did not have a, you know, a specific dialogue with town council as to whether that's absolutely binding, whether we can separate the two, because they are, there's a common issue, right? What's the status of the aquifer?
Right.
And then there's a, there's a water pressure, water system issue, which is more the water superintendent's bailiwick. I don't know that the, I don't know that Cahal, I don't, well, let's, Madam Chair, through you, if I could, ask the water superintendent, do you have an understanding of the situation with the aquifer? Do we need to be concerned about the aquifer, and should we apply these regulations to private wells?
For this evening, we'd be looking strictly for the water that comes from us. The aquifer would be a longer-distance discussion that we'll respectfully request to meet with the Select Board after this. We're collecting more data, we're going to have a lot of suggestions and ideas for how to protect the aquifer, but for this evening, that's a good question. We are not concerned with the aquifer today. We are, but not for this. This incredibly serious request is related to fire flows and sanitary use of water only for what we are providing the public.
Just the municipal supply.
Just the municipal supply.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Should we also be encouraging people, you know, to use less water in their, inside their homes, for any reason?
Honestly, our observations are, it's the irrigation that gets us. We can handle the sanitary, we saw the surge as the spring came through, we're able to handle that. It's the nature of sprinklers, as they all turn on at once, it causes a massive issue for our supply.
Okay, thank you. Great question. Any other questions?
I have a question about enforcement. I've just, it's aggravating to me when I drive around at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and I see a sprinkler going in the sun, and it just seems, some people are not paying attention to the restrictions.
We have had the same experience as recently as today. In the event that the Select Board decides to go in this direction, when appropriate, by the public notice, we're going to be going out daily and enforcing the bylaw to the full extent to protect the residents that comply.
I think we're going to need to.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Can I entertain a motion, as the acting town manager has written?
I would motion, not read the whole thing?
Yes, please. Select Board finds?
Select Board finds that a water shortage exists which jeopardizes the town's ability to ensure a safe and adequate water supply. Further conservation measures will improve the ability of the Water Department to continue to provide safe and adequate water supply to meet the highest priority water uses.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you having me.
unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we are still early a bit, so I'm wondering if, we can't start the hearings till exactly 7:30. So Betsy, I'm wondering if you want to take your time now? We'll move you up, and I have you slated for 15 minutes.
Betsy, do you need a hand with the slides?
I do. I have such a moment.
I'm sure she did. But the machine is shut down. Isn't that interesting?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there we go. This one has a fancy picture on the front, so I'm guessing that's yours.
Yeah, that's mine. It's all pictures.
It's awesome. Very, it's very well done.
Pictures. 10,000 words.
Okay, we will start your time right now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, members of the Select Board and members of the public. As you know, we're, well, maybe you don't know, Peter knows, because Peter's been involved with it, but even while the Coonamessett River Restoration work was being done... with it, but even while the Coonamassat River restoration work was being done, and I focused that, Coonamassat River Restoration restored the Lower River, and even while that work was done, we began to look at other areas that needed attention.
Betsy, would you mind just introducing yourself, even though there's only two or three people who don't know your name?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I'm Betsy Gladfalter. I'm on the Conservation Commission, and I was project coordinator for the Coonamassat River Restoration.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you all know where the Coonamassat River is, which is basically in the heart of Falmouth, kind of divides Falmouth in half. And the Coonamassat River Restoration Project restored about a mile of the Lower River, and instrumental in that project was our partnership with the Division of Ecological Restoration, and we had obtained priority river status, which meant they worked with us all the way along the way, provided technical support, and limited monetary support for the project. So what I'm going to talk about now is the Upper Coonamassat River, and in particular, when we requested, submitted a grant for priority river status, we had a particular project in mind. Okay, just a quick review. Basically, what was done for the Lower River Restoration, the same approach will be taken. The river was made longer, about 40% longer, by adding bends. The sand, residual sand from Cranberry Bog was taken off, put back in the burrow pits, and basically, the, the topography was, was made a pit and mound topography. So instead of, everybody knows about sun plants and shade plants. Well, basically, you have plants that like their feet wet all the time and plants that don't like to be that wet. So it means you're going to have a diversity of plants, and for those of you who have been out there, the plants that are there, except for a few trees and a few bushes that were planted, all of those came up from seed that was buried for 200 years underwater and then 100 years under sand. So basically, it's restoring a very diverse wetland system there. And, and then three dams were taken down, the lower, lower dam, middle dam, and John Parker Road, a large culvert was put. And the importance of that, and it's one of the things that Cahal mentioned, is basically that the simplest way to think of it is, it acts like a sponge. And so not only does it serve for, for flood protection from coastal floods, but it also maintains water in the system. It's good for your, for the groundwater system. So we have wetland diversity and river habitat, and those are our, our goals. So in the next few pictures, the north is going to be towards Doug, and you see the Lower River that was restored. We're working on the Upper River, and the part of the Upper River we're working on is, for those of you who know the area, the Baptiste Boggs. You must know them, Scott. So we started planning. We actually started taking field trips with people in the, while the Lower River was being done. We started working in, in 2019, and these are our partners to the, to date. Conservation DPW and Marine and Environmental Services, Division of Ecological Restoration. Interfluv is, is the company that does the river design, won a competition this year to continue. Coonamassat River Trust, the 300 Committee, have been steadfast. Mass Division of Fish and Wildlife. And then in this part of the Upper River, this is where the, the AFC, the Air Force remediation program was done, and so part of this project will be, that part will be retired. They'll, they still have a few, few more years Upper River, but where this is going to take place, everything they have there can be removed. And then we're applying to NOAA to work, and I've been working with the NOAA Restoration person in Rhode Island. And then Cape Cod Conservation District and NRCS have been on field trips and may be involved. So what have we done? Part of getting this priority river status meant that we were eligible for money, and so in, $50,000 was available initially, and Interfluv won a competition, and then did the study and did a feasibility report, basically a concept report, and then DER awarded another $50,000 to Interfluv to do 50% plans, and that's what we have now, and that's what I'll show you. And then they just awarded, Peter just told me yesterday, that the contract actually came into town to work on MEPA permitting and bringing up to 75% plans. So the project goals are similar to the Lower River, to establish a healthy, self-sustaining river and wetland system, to increase coastal resiliency, especially by removing blockages, and in this case, in the Upper River, there'll be seven culverts that will be removed, improving water quality by reducing temperature stress and attenuating nutrient stress. And also, this is part of the Coonamassat Greenway Heritage Trail, and it's to continue recreational and educational Just to show you a little bit of the historical pictures, Cranberry Bog, this is, was an area that did have mills back in the 1700s. In the late 1800s, early 1900s, Cranberry Boggs were established here, but they were abandoned probably 15 years ago, and one of the big issues is they get filled with invasives, and especially invasive willows. This is just to show you this is part of the 50% plans. On the left, the darker blue shows you the areas of greater sand layers, and on the, on the right-hand side, you have the, the peat layers, and the areas where there are big peats, peat areas are areas that will continue to have ponds, like in the, in the upper, north of John Parker Bridge. We have a couple of ponds there, and there'll be some ponds in this area. So this is a, this is a concept. Do I have a, do I have something I can?
You can use the mouse.
Oh. Oh, all right. So.
Do you mind if I turn off this light right here? It's really glaring.
So a couple of things, for those of you who are familiar with this area.
Turn that one off, too.
Yeah.
That's the one that's killing me.
For those of you who are familiar, let me just point out a couple of things. Berms will be taken out here and all along here, the green area, and in this case, the trail will go around this upper part of the bog, which we just call, it's Bog A now, and then in this area, so this whole northern part, our goal is to make that a fully accessible trail again, like we have in the lower part of the river. And then we'll also have some more rustic crossings. The, the berm at Broad River will come out. Broad River will turn back into a, a river, and this will be passive restoration. And then here are some of the ponds that will be, this is the, this is the 50% plans. The yellow areas will be excavated. The green areas will be filled, and here's where Broad River will now be. Right now, fish can't get into this Broad River area. Okay, so what are the next steps? Well, we're here, here tonight. Mark and I are working hard on three grants. Application to mass wildlife. We want to try to tackle some of the invasives before we actually get into construction, because we can't, we don't have any money for construction yet. That's, that'll be a year off. Application to NOAA for about 1.7 million for final engineering plans, oversight services, and construction. And we're also asking as a $200,000 grant from CPA funds towards this, which will be, the NOAA grant does not require match. They just want to see, to see what other kind of support is being, is being provided. This says September. We'll probably have the public meeting in November, and at that public meeting, we'll have very short presentations about kind of what the results to date were on fish, on, on nutrients and so forth. And by the way, those of you who like brook trout, the reintroduction, introduction of brook trout by Steve Hurley has been wildly successful, and they're breeding in the, in the Lower River now. So we're about, we're about to put out a contract to Interfluv for the MEPA filing and the 75% plans, and the Air Force will remove all the infrastructure in the proposed area, which are, there are a few pump houses, and then there's some piping. Okay, FY '24, so starting in July 23, about a year from now, Interfluv will prepare and file the remaining federal, state, and local permits. Town of Falmouth, assisted by Interfluv, will work on the, the bid package and issue an RFP for construction. Will apply for additional CPA funds with the 300 Committee for a fully accessible trail on the Northern Loop. And then, two years from now, in the late fall, construction will begin, and construction for, for a project like this, which is about two-thirds the size of, of wetland that will be restored, only takes a few months, but because of the NOAA grant cycle, which is pushed three months out past the state grant cycle, what we'll probably do is do some of the final work in, in the next, our next fiscal year to get into the third year of And that's it.
Wow. Questions from the board? Comments from the board? Thank you for your work.
Pretty exciting, pretty exciting that you're carrying on up the river, and I'm really excited to hear about the trout making a comeback there.
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm going to ask Steve if he can present at the public meeting, too.
That's great.
Yeah.
But also, Betsy, I want to thank you for shepherding these projects through, because the work that you do is amazing. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thanks. Do I have one more minute, though?
Yes, you do, of course.
I have, I have one more thing, and this gets to, to the town and, and the help from DPW and Marine and Environmental Services, and also all the work that Mark does. There is lots of money out there available. Part of why, I was, I was retiring after the CRRP, and then COVID came, and I said, well, yeah, I can do that, and yeah, I can write a grant for that, and now we're into the next cycle, right? But there's lots of money for resiliency projects, and I know that the town is thinking about hiring a resiliency coordinator, which is great, but if the town is going to have more projects with grants like this, we're going to need more personnel and support for DPW, because the town really should stay on top of all of these projects. And they, and also for, not necessarily for this project, but any, these projects are exciting. I remember when I first met Peter, he said he liked Falmouth because Falmouth does exciting things, but it costs money to do maintenance on these projects, too. So this is just a pitch to, to all of you to remember that DPW needs some, and for the town to realize that DPW needs resources in order for all these things to take place.
And to maintain.
And I'm, I'm very appreciative of your time and, and of all the, all, all the, everybody, I know everybody in Town Hall, right, because everybody's involved in these projects, and it's, it's, there are a lot of really good employees here.
Yep.
Thanks for your ownership.
I know Chris Bennett was down there. Every time I went for a walk in the Boggs, he's down there inspecting the construction and watching the excavation guy.
Right, but, but that takes time, right?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right, and so if we want more projects, we need to clone Chris.
We have to have the support. Thank you so much, Betsy.
Thank you, Betsy.
Okay, we can do our public hearings. The first one is vote to establish and adopt rules and regulations for the use of municipal dinghy floats and docks.
I'll read the hearing notice, please. The Falmouth Select Board, under the authority of the Falmouth Home Rule Charter, Section C 3-7, subsection H of the Code of the Town of Falmouth, will hold a public hearing to establish and adopt rules and regulations for municipal dinghy floats and docks. The hearing will be held on Monday, August 8, 2022, at 7:30 PM in Select Board Meeting Rooms, Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, MA. Interested parties may review the draft regulations at the Harbor Masters office or online. Per order of the Falmouth Select Board, publication date Friday, July 22, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Welcome, Greg Fraser, and we, I have allotted 15 minutes for your presentation and questions from the board.
Hopefully, I'll be a lot shorter than that.
Okay.
He doesn't mess around.
Good evening. We're continuing our, our ongoing projects of converting a lot of the department's policies and procedures into regulations. I know we started this last year with the, the boats on the shore, got that passed, which will help us this fall. This is basically the next step. We're trying to regulate, or have a, be able to regulate dinghies on, only on municipal dinghy docks and, and floats. So we have had these out in the public for quite a while. We did send them to the Conservation Commission for their review, which was positive. They voted to approve them. We've sent them to the Waterways Committee. They also did it and voted to approve them. I would like to make one change, and it was based on a few suggestions that we got. They're all, we got, I have to say, we got very few public comments on this, but one was the length of the pennant, so we'd just like to make it 10 feet across the board. That would address several of the comments. Other than that, as I said, we've had very few comments on them, and these have been in place and as a policy for quite some time now.
Okay, and the board has a copy of, of the, of the proposal. Are there any questions and, from the board, and is there any public comment?
Hi, Chuck Eastman, Waterways.
Come, come right up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you have to come up to the mic, Chuck.
You have to come to the mic, Chuck, sorry.
I'm not a mic person, but I'll try it out.
You're the star of the show right now.
My name is Chuck Eastman. I'm in the Waterways, also a town meeting member, Precinct 6. I just want to mention that I actually went around today, and there's rather large dinghies that are not used for dinghies. They're boats that are kept there so they can go out and use them, and, and I just really feel that these regulations will stop that. There's guys from Taunton that have their boats there. There's from all over the place, and I just really disagree with people doing that, and so these regulations will definitely help that cause.
So Chuck, you're saying that people are using dinghy, big ones, as boats?
There's actually, there's actual boats.
At the dingy dock, yes.
Like a mooring.
Yes.
On the moorings, I'm sorry.
I've seen it in West Falmouth. Thank you.
And I just really hope we can stop this, and that'd be a great thing.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Mr. Netto.
I came here to support the regulations with the Harbor Master.
Joe, just introduce yourself, please.
Oh, excuse me. Joe Netto, Precinct 9, East Falmouth. I came here to support the Harbor Master because, as Mr. Eastman just said, in the last couple of years, it's amazing what some people think their dinghy should be. Just in Green Pond in this last summer, we had two foot, 15-foot Zodiacs try to get in there. I sent you some pictures to, so that you could see what the overcrowding, and we, we do need at least two more floats down there to accommodate the boating public, because boating has always been, as in the email that I sent you, and I sent you those pictures, it's always been popular, and I think with the pandemic, I, I've never And I think with the pandemic, I've never seen so much activity on, you know, on the water in my 75 years on that pond. So I'm happy tonight, hopefully you adopt these, and that we're trying to get a handle. And when I talk to people down there, as Chuckie was saying, it's unbelievable the just the ignorance, the new boat owners, the short ties, a lot of these Zodiacs that have outboard motors on, that they're chaining them to the dock or using like bike locks, you know, that's only two or three feet. And if you put your 10-foot pennant out there, you're stuck and you have to bring your skiff over these other people's boats if you want to get out. You can't even get to your own. So thank you. We are moving in the right direction and, you know, hopefully next year will be better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Netto. Questions or comments from the board?
My question was gonna be about the differences on the feet of the different harbors, so I'm all set.
And I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
So moved.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Nope. I would move approval of these regulations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Can we clarify the motion includes the changes that?
Yes, the amended.
The amended, good point.
So with the amendment, we'll move the motion and we have a second.
On the amendment, is it exactly a 10-foot pennant or is it 10 to 12-foot or is it greater than 10-foot?
Minimum of 10.
10.
Minimum of 10, thank you.
Okay. Good catch, Mr. Patterson.
So that's it?
So we have a motion and a second?
Yes, we do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonjour.
Okay, our next public hearing is an application for a new wine and malt beverages common victoria license, Dilly's Grill LLC, doing business as Dilly's Taqueria, 281 Main Street in Falmouth. And I have you for 10 minutes.
I'll try to be brief, Madam Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board. My name is James Morris. I'm an attorney.
Can we wait? She needs to read the notice.
My apologies.
No, 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 stay right there. Stay right there. She's just gonna read the notice.
You should know this as a clerk on a municipal board.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the general laws as amended that Dilly's Grill LLC, doing business as Dilly's Taqueria, has applied for all alcoholic beverages common victoria license to be exercised at 281 Main Street, Falmouth, MA. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, August 8, 2022, at 7:30 PM on the above application. Per order of Select Board, publication date Friday, July 29, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
You're on.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening again. My name is James Morris. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth. It's my pleasure this evening to be representing Dilly's Grill LLC, doing business as Dilly's Taqueria. Mr. Adam Rabello, who's seated right here. We're seeking a new beer and wine annual liquor license in the town of Falmouth for Dilly's Grill. It's currently located at 281 Main Street, which is just down Main Street, just after Liam McGuire's, just before the intersection of Cahoon Court. The existing premises is approximately 900 square feet. It's commercially zoned. There was a pre-existing commercial kitchen there. It comprises of about 390 square feet in the dining room, 103 square feet for service area, and a kitchen of about 286 square feet, as well as a small office and a restroom. We did submit an architectural schematic of the existing conditions. The building inspector has taken a look and looked at the architectural load. There is a reduction in the seats from the existing 25 seats. It will be down to 22 seats. Total occupancy is 25 people. Dilly's currently is a, I'd consider a Tex-Mex restaurant with some local fare, serving primarily tacos, burritos, rice bowls, and such, and now seeks just to add beer and wine to complement its existing menu. Anytime a liquor license is applied for a town, it could be concerning as to issues of noise and public safety. This is a 22-seat restaurant. The hours of operation currently are 11:30 in the morning to 8:00 PM. This is not going to turn into a bar. There is no hard alcohol served. There's no request for entertainment licenses of any type. It's just seeking beer and wine literally to complement the Tex-Mex-style food. Mr. Rabello grew up in Oak Bluffs. He has a home here on Amvetts Avenue. He's currently residing in the Vineyard, but he did reside in Falmouth for a number of years. This is Dilly's second location. He has been in the food service industry for a number of years. His first location opened up on Circuit Avenue, which is the main commercial drag in Oak Bluffs on the Vineyard. He was able to obtain the current lease for his establishment here in Falmouth approximately 14 months ago in May of 2021. And he hopes to, after a period of 14 months of success, hopes to be here for a number of years to come. Happy to answer any questions or concerns the board has regarding this request, and if not, Mr. Rabello is happy to address the board as well.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
I don't have any.
Any comments from the public? I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's the board's preference?
I would move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay. Report from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. Are we ready? Great.
Good evening. I do have some audiovisual stuff. How do I activate that?
Only Peter knows.
It's a PC in your.
PC here, so, oh, can I pull this out? Yeah. How do we wake it up?
That's his presentation.
Be my guest.
This would be great.
Where is that? Sure I can see it.
If you want, just X it out here.
There we go.
And then, there you are.
Okay.
And if you could introduce yourself, and I have you scheduled for 15 minutes.
Yep.
Please.
So I'm Scott Lindell, Chair of the of the Falmouth Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. This is going into my eighth year of chairing this committee. And I'm fortunately supported by some of my newer bicycle committee members here, too. There's Catherine Jansen, who's the Vice Chair, and Nat Church, I'm sorry, Clark, Clark, and Neela Lu, back in the backseat there. So if anybody comes to Falmouth or is thinking about coming to Falmouth, and if they Google best things to do in Falmouth, not surprisingly, the Shining Sea Bike Way features large as an attraction here. And there are a lot of great things about the Bike Way, and there are things we can even make better. So I'm going to touch on some of those as I advance this. Arrows aren't working, so can I do? How about this little thing? Does this work? There we go. Thank you, Peter.
It was.
Is it full screen? No, yes.
Let's do that.
Go down here.
Great, just.
Thanks. It takes an engineer to figure out these things, so we have one in the audience. But speaking of engineering challenges, this is the main complaint I get about the Shining Sea Bike Way. These root bumps, in some areas in particular, are really posing a safety hazard. And we wouldn't we wouldn't accept this on our roadway, this broken pavement. You know, I'm surprised people haven't lost fillings here. This is about a mile from Woods Hole as you come down toward Trunk River. And we've we've really wanted some kind of warning signage where these bumps are really bad. And with working with the DPW, Nat went out and Pokemark, Poki Dot, Poka Dot marked the Bike Way where all these root bumps are. For some reason, this is just a continual issue. We've had sections of the Bike Way successfully churned up and paved, and five years later, those roots are right back again. And really, the only long-term solution that engineers and and horticulturists told me is successful is to remove the invasive black locust trees that are responsible. Now, we really love the shade cover on the Bike Way. There's no doubt that we want to remove that. But there are places we can selectively do this and still have plenty of tree cover just removing those really bad locust trees. And perhaps planting new trees, too. So with Nat's good work, we kind of looked at the focus of where these surface eruptions are on the Bike Way. Where are the worst problems? And if you if you just count up the highlighted areas here, it's about a less than half, less than a half a mile of pavement that needs to be rejiggered. And 70% of all these various root bumps could be taken care of. It's not going to be cheap. Typically, we've been doing this with with the pavement crew that comes in and does our roadways. And that's a lot of money it takes to to deploy and and retrieve the big equipment. We may want to look at more surgical strikes at this and and come up with some solutions. But what we have isn't working if we're if because I think we can't afford to do this, you know, every mile, every five years. So one of the, I'll get to complete streets and some of the highest priority items that we have coming up for development in cooperation with DPW. One of them is the KLB Cathay-Bates Multi-Use Path. Many of you have seen the advancements that DPW implemented this year with creating a multi-use path around Shiverick's Pond from basically taking the path from Mullen Hall all the way to the path to Lawrence Junior High. So we have this lovely path now, but as you see on the right, it ends right where you get to Shiverick's Pond, the end of Shiverick's Pond. We'd like to see that extended, and DPW does, too, all the way to the crossing, the crosswalk we have that connects to the Bike Way. This is be a huge draw to be able to bring all that tourist traffic. Did I mention that we have 250,000 counts on our on our counter, automatic counter, of people coursing north and south each year? 250,000 people. Not many of them know that they're that close to downtown, nor do they feel safe and comfortable coming in with their bikes and spending their tourist dollars. They'll maybe come in later with their cars and look for parking, but we know what kind of a problem we have with parking. Let's get them in via this multi-use path. Here's where the cross, the the multi-use path would potentially end. We'd have to widen this sidewalk here. And then we've got the crosswalk. Crosswalk is problematic, too, because you've got this connector. You can see the two goalposts of the bikes showing where the connector goes to the Shining Sea Bike Way. The bicyclists have to get out of the actual crosswalk, even if they're coming on this side of the road or the sidewalk, to get into that area. And it's more problematic when they come out of this area, they're supposed to cross diagonally into the into the biking and travel lane of the of the of Cathay-Bates. So I think having a signaled crosswalk there, like we have at Locust Street, or maybe the new one I'm going to describe at Goodwill Park, and this multi-use path would be the safest and best way to bring all this tourist traffic and commuter traffic and potentially kids who want to bike to school. Think about this. This would be open up ways for parents to possibly bike with their kids safely to Lawrence or Mullen Hall. So I'm not the first committee to tell you about wayfinding. This goes back to 2016. It's prominently in the master plan for Main Street. We badly need some wayfinding, both for cars and trucks. We've got it. We've got some signs now directing trucks not to come down Main Street. But pedestrians and bicyclists, particularly if they start coming down this multi-use path and using downtown, we want them to know where to go, something that's bicycle and pedestrian friendly, not huge signs that cars see necessarily. So this has been on the docket. You guys have already voted to appoint a wayfinding committee based on the Transportation Committee's recommendation. I think you just need to ask the town manager to advertise and appoint a committee. Let's not waste any time, and let's try to do that this fall. So here's the top 15 of the 50 complete streets priority projects that DPW and the Cape Cod Commission and the Bike Ways Bike Way and Pedestrian Committee worked on very hard over the course of the winter. And we're making some good progress, thanks to individual initiatives and mostly the DPW. So number one, I've just been talking about the Cathay-Bates Shared Pathway. So the through a town petition at town meeting, $150,000 of funds have been assigned or allocated to design of complete streets projects. DPW is elected to put all that into the number one project, which is going to be perhaps that expensive just to design because there's not just the path, but there's also the crosswalk. But that's apparently waiting for, as Peter tells me, town office sign-off. Let's get going on that. Let's see if we can get that going this fall. Number three ranking and number seven ranking, these were road designs, intersection designs that DPW's had in the works for some time, but they fit our complete streets priorities because anytime you have improvements of of the intersections, it's going to make it safer for bicyclists and pedestrians to navigate as well. Number four, extension of the Shining Sea Bike Way. Congratulations to both the towns of Bourne and Falmouth for joining forces with VHB and DPW to get another round of funding to engineer that connection and extension through mass trails. The Goodwill Park Crossing to Gifford. I'm going to talk about another Goodwill Crossing pretty soon, the one you've all seen as you come into town. But that's just the first step. We need these east-west connections. We need to connect our parks, both linear, that goes now north-south, the Shining Sea Bike Way, to Goodwill Park and to Trotting Park. And we can't do that unless we have this crosswalk at Goodwill, I'm sorry, at Gifford Street where Goodwill ends. It needs a traffic study. The Cape Cod Commission has apparently done a traffic study, but that wasn't good enough. We need at least $10,000 more, is what Director McConerty is telling me at DPW. Another great initiative by DPW was a shared streets award to put Curly Boulevard on the road diet. We'll have buffered bike bike lanes there, too. So that's great. I'd say the one my one chief and only complaint about all the initiatives that DPW has made in these complete streets initiative is the proposals and projects are being developed, sometimes in absence of consulting with the deep with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. We do a lot of reaching out to DPW. I know how busy they are. I'd just like to see a little more checking in with us about plans before they're submitted to to the agencies for for funding. So here's the Goodwill Crossing, just to take a little mystery out of what's what's that going to look like when it's all done. First of all, there's going to be this large mast. Look at this left-hand side here. There'll be a large mast right across the highway with, what, six lights that can't be missed. There's already signage up the highway warning folks that there's going to be a crossing there. And the the lights will flash yellow to warn drivers that they better start slowing down. It'll go solid yellow, and then it will go red. At the same time, pedestrians are seeing, they won't see the, they won't see the the sign across the street saying it's safe to cross until it's a full red stop. And then there'll be a time, a timer counting down so they know how much time they have to cross. These are all over the place in Massachusetts. If you go into some urban street environments, you'll see them, and they're they're very, very safe and effective. This is the bikers view approaching from Goodwill Park to the crosswalk there and then onto the bike path. I think I've said it once, I'll say it one more time. Here's here's what we're trying to do. We've got this new crosswalk here. Let's get the crosswalk permitted and constructed between Goodwill Park across Gifford, and then it's just a short sidewalk trip up to the park, Trotting Park, so we can have kids on their on their skateboards, going to the skate park from from the Bike Way if they so choose, or going to the baseball fields or the soccer fields. This is just a good east-west connection that we need. Finally, to extend the east-west or west-east connection opportunities here, this is a project that's been languishing for far too long, trying to make some progress on this Route 28 pathway, some kind of accommodations on Route 28 from Main Street down to T-Pick Ticket and and through Davisville Straits. It's this this image I have is taken from the 2016 transport, you know, transportation recommendations that the McMahon Report did. We've had public meetings with the latest transportation engineers the town has engaged, and I think they got lots of feedback. That was almost a year ago. DPW director tells me that there'll be a meeting here in September, hopefully with 25% design plans. I I hope that's that's true, and there will be opportunity for public comment as well at that time. So just a summary of my requests tonight, and you'll see them outlined in the report as well, but I'll just make it very simple. We'd like to see the board track and speed the development of this Cathay-Bates path and crossing. Anything you can do to support DPW and making that happen would be great. Appoint a wayfinding committee for downtown signage. I know there are I know there are members on the Bike Ways Committee and the Transportation Committee ready to volunteer some time. Complete the traffic study that's necessary and get the next steps going for the Gifford Street cross, crosswalk from Goodwill Park. Track and speed the development of the Route 28 corridor improvements. We've been talking about it for four or five years and we really have very little to show for it. Required DPW to consult with our committee, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, before and during proposal project development, especially when bike and pedestrians may be impacted. And that's my conclusion.
All right.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Okay, one if I could. Regarding the routes on the bike path, Scott, do you think, has any of the bike path had the route barriers installed anywhere?
They did behind wood lumber at one time.
Yeah. Has it been effective?
And they, they weren't effective.
No?
No. They went right up and over.
Hmm. Okay. That's disappointing.
So they didn't actually remove those Black Locus routes that went underneath the bike path?
They, they never have to my knowledge, no. We, we talked about it, I talked about it with the board and with Peter, we had a meeting with the town manager five, six years ago. There was, there was concern about losing shade, even though I, it was maybe a dozen trees between Locust Street and Depot Avenue that we're talking about removing.
I have a question actually for Peter.
Go ahead.
The, the note about the Cathy Bates path needing town office approval, do you know what, offhand, what that is?
It's just a, it's just signature. It must be, what, within the last week, it's been going through the accounting office. I, I hadn't seen it as of Friday, but is that, yeah. So it's, it's not something that's been holding anything up for months, it's a matter of days.
Okay, thank you.
Great clarifying question.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Comments? Go ahead.
Sorry, what, the wayfinding committee, is that something that, that we, when did we approve that? When did we discuss that?
I can tell you exactly when, when I get home tonight, but, because my wife's on the Transportation Committee.
It was like May or April of last year.
Was it, was it la, was it last, I just, was it last year?
It was last year, April or May, when, I mean, I remember it was, summer was imminent, so it was, it was a little too late, but we were still going to look into it, I thought.
Okay, so that, that's.
Could you get us the date?
Sure.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
I'd like that.
Who should I, I send it to you, Nancy?
That would be great. And I can, oh, you can send it to the entire board, that's, that's fine, anyway.
Yeah.
Another great question.
Madam Chair, on that, I guess I would just throw out there for the board's consideration whether you would like for the select board to appoint this committee, which takes a lot more time, as you know. Under the policy, it means you have to advertise, you have to interview, put it on an agenda, or if you would prefer to have the town manager appoint this committee, which means it would, you know, report to me and I could appoint more quickly, just to.
Do you have a preference? I don't have a preference. And if we could.
Very expedient.
I would prefer the in-house committee because it'll.
I agree.
Be easier to manage and.
I agree.
You can tap the appropriate committees to get inputs.
Yeah.
And then you can integrate it all together. It seems to me they're a logical way to go.
Yes. I would agree. I think that's a great idea, and if you have no objection, we'll go ahead and, and ask Acting Town Manager Johnson Staub to do that. So you don't have to send me the date. We're good.
Probably Historic Commission needs to be included so they can have some inputs on, you know, sites of interest in the town as well.
Right. Or at least a chair, maybe.
Yeah, it's a good thought.
That is a good thought. Anything else?
Not for me, no thanks.
All right. Thank you very much.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you for your work.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Okay, next on our list, as we, I believe the Acting Town Manager announced that we're going to reschedule the Energy Committee, so they are off, off our list, and we will go to the Steamship Authority. Peter Jeffrey? And you have, I've given you 15 minutes.
Good evening. My name's Peter Jeffrey, and I'm the Town of Falmouth-appointed member to the Steamship Authority Board. I appreciate you having me here tonight. I, I wanted to get, basically brief the select board on what I see are some of the issues affecting the Town of Falmouth currently on the Steamship Authority, as well as try to seek the, the select board's guidance on how you want the Town of Falmouth member to vote on some upcoming issues. I don't think anyone can question the, the impact that the Steamship Authority has on the Town of Falmouth, both positive and negative. From a positive aspect, you know, the Steamship Authority employs 184 Town of Falmouth residents. The Town of Falmouth residents make up about 24% of the entire Steamship Authority's employee payroll, and almost $10 million worth of payroll goes directly to Town of Falmouth residents employed by the Steamship Authority. Also, you know, it continues this two centuries' worth of, of an industrial port in Woods Hole that the Steamship Authority came into and using those ports. But the impact that the Steamship Authority is having, and I'm sure all of you are getting emails and videos, that's why I'm going low-tech today, I don't need to show you the traffic on Woods Hole Road, we've all received those videos quite frequently, as well as the pollution that's impacting. But I want to kind of put in perspective the limitations that the, the board has in terms of addressing those issues, not only myself, but the other members, including the majority members from the islands of Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. The Enabling Act does not portion voting evenly amongst the board members. I know that's always been a focus of some angst amongst the port towns, as well as been debated within the state legislature, which created the Steamship Authority. Currently, both the Nantucket representative and the Martha's Vineyard representative each have 35% of the vote, basically being veto-proof. It takes the act or actions of at least one island member to pass anything in conjunction with the rest of the other town, port members, or, you know, have all the port members plus one island member vote. And so it distinctively, you know, there's a very pro-island view, but I think it goes beyond that with what I see as some of the failings of the Enabling Act, is that the Steamship Authority, unlike any other transportation, public transportation in the, in the, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or within the United States, is 100% Fairbox-driven. Not only are operations are Fairbox-driven, but also all of our capital expenses and expenditures have to be replaced by the revenue that the Steamship Authority generates. And we currently have a bond limit of only $100 million. To put that in perspective, that maybe would be able to replace one vessel out of our 10 vessels from initial manufacture, if we were going to produce a new contract for a new vessel. So automatically, we have this kind of constraint on the ability of the board in terms of its fiduciary duties of making sure that our revenue and our bond level meets, you know, meets the contracting procurement needs that we have. I sent a report ahead of time, and some of the big issues that are now facing the Steamship Authority is, first, in terms of that bond limit, we've used about 60% of the current bond limit of that 100 million. So we don't even have enough right now to replace a vessel, at least with a new vessel, with contracting for a new vessel. Added in that, we just completed, the Steamship Authority completed two very important studies. One was a useful life obsolescence study of our 10-vessel fleet, wherein they found, this outside contractor found, that at least three of our four primary freight vessels have a useful life of three to five years left before obsolescence. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that in five years, those vessels will no longer be in service. It's probably more like a seven-to-nine-year useful life with, with very focused and aggressive maintenance, but it does mean we have a very aging fleet, and that poses its own problems. If anyone has followed the news lately, we did have the MV Gayhead that does primarily the freight service, the hazardous materials service, from Hyannis to Nantucket in the summer. It was out for almost five days when there was a crack above the waterline, it had to be taken out of service and dry docked, which then put even more pressure on the Town of Falmouth and the Port of Woods Hole, because the MV Sancti had to do double duty and actually started running a freight run from Woods Hole to Nantucket for that period of five days. Now, the, the Gayhead's back in service, but you can see that with this aging fleet and with vessels coming out of service, that we have a big issue with it increasing the even more demand on the traffic and on the Port of Woods Hole, because this is primarily where most of the vessels come out of. Additionally, we did a hybrid propulsion study to look at the ability or the cost of trying to convert our vessels or what it would cost to procure new vessels in the future to be in a hybrid propulsion, to be better in line with the environment. We looked at both all-electric, which had obviously the best carbon impact, as well as we looked at different varying levels of hybrid propulsion, where there'd be electric plus diesel. What was troubling to find out was that, one that I was quite surprised of, is absent an all-electric vessel, the carbon savings is almost negligible in terms of a hybrid propulsion vessel. There's only usually a 7% to 9% savings in the carbon imprint on a hybrid propulsion vessel that isn't, unless we went all-electric, and that's only in cases where the electricity generated to charge the batteries of the hybrid, hybrid vessel come from a green source. And the majority of power in the Commonwealth is not green, it's primarily from natural gas. But the cost of that now, in terms of the, the ability of the Steamship Authority, is just completely cost prohibitive, and the technology is such that it would not permit a vessel to run the Hyannis to Nantucket route as well for freight, both in terms of the power consumption that's needed, as well as the battery capacity, the batteries would be such that it would weigh our vessels down to the point that they could not enter Hyannis So it's kind of that background in mind, you know, it, it's not all just about the traffic, but then again, it's about the traffic, and I, and I don't see how in meeting the board's fiduciary duties, how we can move on to procuring other vessels, at least in the short term, to, to alleviate some of that concern. And, and since I submitted my report to the board, I'd also point out that we had put out a request for proposals, trying to seek a third-party freight carrier that we would then license from an alternative non-Cape port to service Martha's Vineyard. It was on, out for, I think about four or five months, and we had zero applications, zero interest. So, you know, unfortunately, I think the, the Vineyard with its growth is only going to want more in terms of freight capacity as well as passenger capacity, and there seems to be no off-Cape interest, at least by third parties, in providing that service. So, you know, the two major issues that I'm kind of facing and looking for your guidance on is, first, the, the 5:30 a.m. ferry, who's once again, freight ferry's been proposed for the summer 2023 schedule from Woods Hole to Martha's Vineyard. I know that the Vineyard very much wants it. I know that in terms of freight, and I understand that my counterparts on the islands will always vote each other's interests because they're rather in simpatico with one another with wanting the freight to get there, but I'm seeking guidance on how the select board may want me to vote on the 5:30 a.m. ferry. I know how my neighbors in Woods Hole want me to vote for certain. And then to bring to your attention, there is a petition now for a public hearing from an Egger Town businessman who is trying to get the Steamship Authority to expand its late-night service to have a midnight ferry or a post-11:30 p.m. ferry. I believe it'll go to hearing because the petition, I think, has enough signatories to it, to expand its service to bring island, to bring hospitality workers off island back to the Cape because of their own housing issues, although given the housing issues here, I don't know where those people are going to go once they get, come over at midnight on the ferry. I don't think they're sleeping in Woods Hole unless it's at the terminal. So those are, those are kind of the major issues that I'd point out, the limitations, and I'm happy to answer any questions and would welcome your comments too, as in terms of direction.
Thank you. Comments from the board? Mr. Brown?
I would share that I did attend that public hearing, and I remarked and commented that we, this board has sent a letter each year in opposition to the 5:30 boat, although we didn't do it this year. I just reminded them that I don't think the position of the board has changed, just because we didn't send a letter, so just reminded them of that. I can understand that they want it and need it. I wish they had managed it better. They started it without really announcing it formally. The neighbors just started hearing the noises and, you know, it's not the greatest way to introduce it, and once a neighborhood is aggravated, it's really impossible to bring them back and unaggravate them. So I've been researching this Steamship Authority issue. I'm on the long-range training, planning committee. The thing the trouble with the RFP currently is that there's no land available in New Bedford that's really viable. There's a one-acre lot with no real commitment from the city of New Bedford or the Port Authority to supplement that lot, and there's not a lot you can do on one acre to develop a site that has no infrastructure. How much can you invest in a site and, and put in the bridge to get the cars on and all the stuff on one acre? So I think what we really need to do is intervene with legislators. We need to petition legislators to help us with this, because I think New Bedford needs a little more of a push to share some of their dock space instead of giving it all to the wind industry, because that seems to be where it's headed, because they're like the highest bidder, and so we're in a kind of a competition and we're not even a player. So Falmouth doesn't really have much leverage to influence the outcome, so I think we need some, some more help.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Scott Price?
I have a question about going to Nantucket from Hyannis. What time do those ferries start?
There is a 5:30 a.m. summer freight ferry out of Hyannis to Nantucket. There is also a 5:30 a.m. ferry coming to Woods Hole from the Vineyard in the summertime.
And is, I don't, I've never been to the Hyannis Port, so is there an option to have a second boat leave Hyannis Port instead of coming out of Woods Hole to go to Martha's Vineyard in the mornings?
Hyannis is restricted in terms of its depth. I mean, the reason, I guess, Woods, Woods Hole's been an industrial port for over two centuries is it's a deep-water, very sheltered port. Unlike Hyannis, really is limited to the, the amount of draft that can go through the harbor there. I think it's also a matter of distance. I mean, Woods Hole to Martha's Vineyard is the shortest route.
It's also, if I could, Madam Chair, there's also another issue when the Steamship Authority had to negotiate to, I think, rebuild the, the facility there, and the town council was wise enough to say, we'll let you rebuild it, but we want a memorandum of understanding between the town and the Steamship Authority that there's going to be a limited number of trips per day. We should have done that before we allowed them to rebuild and build a third slip. I wish we had the foresight to have thought of that, but we didn't. And we're not in a very strong position now to, to get that, but we could ask.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Is there an option that the, if the 5:30 ferry is voted in, for that to only be passenger vehicles and not have commercial vehicles?
The proposed, the Steamship Authority has to put out all of its schedules in advance, and they're open to public hearing. This one is specifically for freight. It's what the, the Vineyard has requested for, for its. It's what the Vineyard has requested for its businesses. I think the Steamship is being responsive to them. I believe it is a foregone conclusion that it will pass. I can't imagine that my, that my counterparts in Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard will vote against further freight going there. I will say from a positive aspect that Mr. Malkin, who's the Martha's Vineyard representative or board member, does have some empathy for Woods Hole and has come out in the MV Times speaking against extending our hours and having that 11:30 midnight ferry into Woods Hole and is, and is pushing for those business owners to find a third-party passenger carrier to find a different port other than Woods Hole, which may be Falmouth and a third-party carrier such as the Pied Piper, Sand Piper, or the Island Queen, which I think would make more sense and kind of join him in his conclusions on that, but not, but not have it burden Woods Hole further.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
One other thing I would add is, is that we're beginning landside construction in the fall of the Woods Hole Terminal, the replacement terminal. So traffic in that area will be even further disruptive. From the positive economic impact side, I will say it was a local Falmouth company that won the site grading. So it's Falmouth jobs and a positive impact there. But I'm, I'm assuming it'll have an even greater impact on the already congested traffic in the off-season on Cowdery Lane, Lipscomb Ave., and Railroad Ave. And so one of the things, too, that I think that the town should look at is greater enforcement. I know that there's limited resources with the police department, but I think a lot of problems stem from a lack of enforcement of traffic laws that are already on, that are already on the books, that could be enforced to move the flow. I know that one of the things that I've done and gotten the other board members to do is we have invited out, the Steamship has asked the state police Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Unit to come out on random checks, and we have, the authority has extended a long-term invitation to that, and they have come out. And I think that's helped to some extent in terms of monitoring, you know, pollution of the trucks and gross tonnage, but that doesn't help necessarily with the vehicle traffic. I know just today I got an email, and perhaps some of you did too, about the unloading of Vineyard Transportation Authority buses blocking the road. And, you know, I'm sure that you've read Mr. Davis, the general manager's explanation. That was a matter of the freight carrier not following anyone's instructions. And I think, once again, enforcement could have dealt with that probably quicker than the Steamship Authority.
And I think we all did receive that and the response. So thank you very much for your report. It was very informative, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to take Mr. Lindell first, and then I'll take you. Please.
I'm glad you mentioned, sorry, I need to return this to, I'm glad you mentioned Lipscomb and Railroad Avenue, because that's been an area of deep concern by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. It's kind of a scrum right now. It may get worse as, as the building and redesign and lifting up of that whole area goes further. But enforcement is definitely going to be an important piece of the traffic piece. But right now, wayfinding, lines on the, on the, on the pavement, anything would be better than what we have now. It is just a wide-open, looks like a ball field, you know, or a kid's playground. There's now traffic coming right off that third berth where there used to be a blockage where the whoosh used to turn in and have a, you know, that sort of created a natural way for Lipscomb to go into Railroad Avenue. Right now, there's nothing. So this really needs some attention. We've been arguing that there should be a traffic study done. And I don't care whether the town pays for it, Peter, or the Steamship Authority, but I wish that the Board of Selectmen would require that a traffic study be done to make this area safer, because I'm afraid somebody small and precarious on a bicycle trying to follow their parents through that area is going to get hurt.
All right.
Thank you.
Final point that I would like to make is regarding the financial aspects that Mr. Jeffrey raised in his report, the fact that the $100 million bonding limit and the, I wanted to ask a question, Mr. Jeffrey. I'm not aware of whether or not the construction costs for the building are fully bonded already?
Yes, that, the majority of our bond now is committed to the Woods Hole Terminal reconstruction.
So that's already all wrapped up?
It's all wrapped up.
Okay, very good.
Other, other than perhaps, oh, cost overruns, but yes.
Right, okay. The other thing is that I think you made a good point about the limitations of the $100 million bond limit, and I think that's set in the Enabling Act itself. So I think that the Enabling Act is going to have to get looked at soon for two reasons. The one, Steamship Authority's going to want to look at it just because of their own issue. And two is just the general way that the whole thing is affecting the town of Falmouth. I think that there's probably some improvements that could be made, so I would advocate for us to send a letter at some point, and we might need more discussion, but at some point we should petition the legislature to consider either some more legislative oversight or maybe revisiting the Enabling Act to see if there's some improvements that could be made.
Thank you. And I, I like the idea of the traffic study that Mr. Lindell pointed out and where that area is, and I would like maybe you to bring that back from, if the Select Board is in agreement with that. I think it would be incumbent upon the Steamship Authority to fund a, a traffic study in safety. Okay? Thank you so much. We'll move on.
Thank you.
On that note, perhaps a letter from us, though, would help if we could get it correct.
Sure.
I could request.
We could do that.
Good point.
Very good point. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Okay. Lastly, we have broadband municipal light plant update, Falmouth Net, Artie Gaylord, and I have given you 10 minutes.
Hello, I had some slides. I don't know if they made it onto the computer or not.
Can you see it on the screen there?
Oh, um, no.
I don't see it.
The bottom on the left, yeah. There you go.
Okay, well, let's not, I won't worry about it. It's only, it's not true.
There you go.
It's like a big city.
Yeah. It's the big city. This is Falmouth of the future. After the broadband gets built, it'll be like this.
Oh, no, don't tell people that.
That's absolutely not the case.
I just wanted to do a quick update of where we've been since the April Town meeting. And we've been doing some, continuing to do, try to do community outreach. The main thing is we had the Tilson Engineering Study, which you all have a copy of. We had a public meeting on that in May. It was fairly lightly attended, but I think it was informative for the people who wanted to come. And we had actually three people from Tilson, either on the phone or presence, to give their presentation. We've continued to talk to neighborhood groups as, as we can, as they approach us. We've been maintaining a much-reduced, but still a social media presence so that people know that we are continuing to exist and that things are continuing on. And we've been making some effort to learn from other municipal light plants throughout, throughout the state. Of course, one of the big things is trying to find funding for the, for both the project as a whole and for the municipal light plant board as it gets started up. Representative Fernandez, who has been very helpful in this, and he put forth an amendment in the economic development bill for $100,000 to do startup funding, as well as one for $5 million in bonding for the construction of the project. Now, the bonding is kind of, you know how bonding works within the state, is you put forward, everybody puts forward lots of money, and some of it materializes and some of it doesn't, but it's still, it's a step. And both of those amendments made it into the bill as passed out of the House. It made it into the final bill, but then this is the economic development bill, which sort of got waylaid at the last minute when it turned out that there was this law that said funds had to be given back, and they took in too much taxes. And so right now, it's all in limbo. Representative Fernandez is confident that something will pass, and I think, I would go along with that. I mean, there was far too much in that bill, far too many interests. I know Falmouth had other interests well beyond Falmouth Net in that bill. So something will happen, but we're just not sure when and what. I suspect that the $100,000 for Falmouth's networking is such a small fraction of the bill, and it's wrapped in with so many other amendments that got bundled with it, that I would be very surprised if anybody were to single that out and remove it. But they may remove a whole chunk, you know. We can't predict that until it happens. Senator Moran proposed $125 million to enhance broadband on the Cape, throughout the entire Cape. That actually, unfortunately, did not make it out of committee. It's something she proposed twice now, and each time it gets a few more senators who are willing to, to consider it. So it's one of those long shots that you keep doing, and someday it, it might go through. We're also trying to evaluate the county ARPA broadband funding possibilities. The county ARPA basically set us, has a separate section and grants that can be applied for, for broadband. They're not real specific, well, they're not real specific about what the, how it will be allocated and what the process is, except for the fact that they've put up, you know, a couple pages of requirements that you have to meet and so forth. So we're still looking at that, and it's, it's a little bit vague at this point in our understanding. And it's something that, you know, we should probably try to talk with the town more about how to approach this. And then finally, we're hoping that, you know, the MLB election can still happen in November, although I was told today that it's not been finalized yet in the state legislature. It's still one of those things that's, that's pending. But assuming that it does go forward, or even if it's delayed, the thing is that Falmouth Net wants to do all it can to try to give this board, once it's elected, a running start. And part of that is trying to transfer the information that we've learned over the years through the studies, through talks, sharing studies that other towns have done, preparing a set of draft materials, which might, because there'll have to be ultimately a charter for the, for the, for the board, a set of bylaws, a job description if they're going to hire a municipal light plant board manager, as the law requires, you know, maybe a suggested startup budget. So we've just been working on that. And again, this is all just to try to, to give this board a running start. It's not saying, we know how to do it, it's how it has to be done. And, you know, I'm hoping to meet with all of you, especially Peter, about, you know, for to get advice as to how we, how we craft some of these things. And really, that's, that's all I have at this point. I just wanted to try to keep you up to date and give you a chance to ask any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for sort of keeping it on our radar. Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention Lieutenant Governor Polito showed up last week at the One Cape Summit, and she made a point that I think we should really take seriously. She said, you're much better off if you work regionally or at least in groups of municipalities, because if you're one out of 351, it's really hard for us to take you seriously. But, you know, if you're five or 15 out of 351, we like that because then we're addressing the needs of multiple municipalities and not one-offs. So I just wanted to share that little piece of wisdom that she was sharing with the rest of us. So that may be the only way we can get the attention of the state at any significant level.
Well, yeah, thank you. And that's part of, I mean, we have been talking with other neighboring towns.
Yeah, I know.
To the extent, and it's a little bit of, you know, the, the regional collaboration is good, but it's also, the more towns you try to get to coordinate, the longer and more complicated the process becomes. So it's, it's trying to play it both ways. And, you know, part of Senator Moran's request for a large proposal was to do it as a Cape, a Cape-wide solution to state. Here's, you know, here's the scope. In fact, that number came from an estimate of about, of what it would be of for, to half the construction costs to equip 100,000 homes with broadband throughout the Cape.
Can I continue on this? I've been contacted by Select Board members from both Mashpee and Bourne interested. How easy would it be for us to expand the MLP that we set up to include a more regional
I don't, we can't do that directly. They would have to establish their own MLPs. But part of the Massachusetts law, the chapter 164, specifically talks about regional cooperation of MLPs. So if they were to form their own, then it would be easy to, to regionalize that and cooperate. The other thing is if, if we were to be in existence and if we had an existing network, we could discuss with them about expanding across borders.
Yeah, that's, that's actually what I was thinking about, is the potential. So, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
So, Mr. Gaylord, the county just allocated $5 million that's going to be available to, specifically to nonprofits, not for government use?
Right.
So you could go right after that tomorrow.
That's, that's what I was looking at and trying to figure out exactly what, how to do it and what their intention was.
Right. You can check with the county clerk, and he could explain the process.
And I should mention that Dan Gessen.
I was just going to bring up his name.
Has been, has been quite, has been quite helpful in keeping us informed on that. And of course, he's also a member of our boards.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Mr. Gaylord. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
With your indulgence, it occurs to me that in the draft motion that I prepared for you for the water conservation restriction, I neglected to include the specific restriction. So if I could ask you to just revisit that vote, the first two bullet points are fine, they, they could be reiterated exactly as is, but then we just need to add this sentence from Mr. O'Brien's memo, which says, "All irrigation of outdoor areas is prohibited except for watering by hand."
I think that's a really good point, because we need to tell people what it looks like. Could you read that again? And we will vote it.
Sure, so, so I'll, I'll read the motion that perhaps a member might make. Select, the Select Board finds that a water shortage exists which jeopardizes the town's ability to ensure a safe and adequate water supply. Further conservation measures will improve the ability of the Water Department to continue to provide safe and adequate water supply to meet the highest priority uses. And as such, all irrigation of outdoor areas is prohibited except for watering by hand.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those in favor of approving the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, I will move on to the consent agenda, and I just want to signal right off the bat that I'm going to hold D and E. So, I'm going to go through and read them all. If there's, if there are any other pieces that you want to hold, please let the chair know.
Because there's three on here that actually require community preservation funding.
Yes.
And the question I had was, will those get developed by the town and submitted to the conservation CPC?
Yes.
Okay, so, that'll be taken care of, and we don't have to be concerned about the timing on getting the articles submitted.
We have until Wednesday, correct?
Well, I know it's coming up fast, and that's the reason for me asking that question, so, thank you.
Great question. Okay, I'm going to go through each one of them. Approve ever-source petition to install on Knobsko Road one new handhold labeled 115HIA at the base of existing pole 1151, and to install approximately 33 feet of conduit and cable under the town road southwesterly from the new handhold number 115H1A. This work is necessary to provide new electric service to 5 Knobsko Road. Approve ever-source petition to install on Bridge Street approximately 59 feet of conduit and cable under the town road easterly, starting at existing handhold 235H14 at the base of existing pole 23514. The work is to be done to provide new electric service to 12 Bridge Street. Sign variance request, off-premise promotional signage for special event Buzzards Bay watershed Vote to approve expenditure from the Falmouth Library Department donation account in the amount of $2,500 for the replacement of the refrigerator. I requested this. Authorize special counsel to look at the interim town manager contract and give the select board feedback. Approve application to Mass Wildlife Habitat Management Grant Program, sand plain, grassland expansion, and invasive plant management on the Kunameset fields. Approve application to Mass Wildlife Habitat Management Grant Program, invasive plant control on the Upper Kunameset River Wetlands Complex. Approve application for, to the Community Preservation Fund Ecological Restoration of the Upper Kunameset River Complex. Approve application to Community Preservation Fund Little Pond Landing Parking and Path Infrastructure and Native Plant Landscaping. Vote to approve the submittal of an application to the Community Preservation Committee from the Edward Marx Building Advisory Committee for funds for Phase Two of the restoration. So, I would ask that we vote on the consent agenda excluding D and E.
Can we come back and get an update on D?
We're going to talk about D and E, but we're going to vote this, and we're going to exclude D and E at this point.
Great.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we're going to get an update from Acting Town Manager Johnson Staub regarding assigning the right of first refusal for 5 Esker Place to the Falmouth Housing Trust, and I would refer you back to his initial report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we did get some information after the agenda was posted. This is a matter that town council and the housing coordinator have been working on for weeks, and for this particular deed restriction, the town does not have a right of first refusal that applies to the current set of circumstances, which is a foreclosure, so we are unable to assign that right of first refusal to the Falmouth Housing Trust. So, I am recommending that that not be approved. I would just add to that, that does not mean we are giving up on trying to preserve the affordability of that unit. That's something that the Falmouth Housing Trust and town staff are continuing to work on.
Would someone on the board like to make that motion to approve, to support the recommendation of the acting town manager?
Some moves.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and E, is authorize expenditure from the Air Force Center for Environmental Excellence AFCEE funds for the continued monitoring analytic costs relating to the shoreward dry permeable reactive barrier PRB to not exceed $5,000. The reason I held that is because I need to recuse myself from the vote on that, so...
Okay.
Someone wants to make a motion?
I would like to move approval of that. That project's working out nicely, and...
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, so, we have four and one. I recuse. Thank you.
One abstention.
Yes, because of who is asking for that money.
Right.
Madam Chair, I apologize. I do have another matter to revisit, if we could, on the regular agenda, item number five, the Kunameset River restoration. You see on the agenda I listed there, is in addition to the update, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration grant application for approximately 1.75 million. I had that on the consent agenda for your consideration and action, and I apologize, I should have brought that up when we were discussing that item under number five. I took, I didn't want to put that in the, on the consent agenda, because it's such a big project, that I wanted to make sure that there was a, you know, a discussion and, you know, that the board looked at it individually and considered whether you want to support that application. I do recommend it. You heard that I had some concerns about staff capacity. I do feel that those have been and are being addressed, but I did want to encourage you to vote approval of that application.
So moves.
I just have a question.
Yes.
A procedural question, because you're taking it off the consent agenda. It shouldn't have been on the consent agenda.
It's on the business item agenda, so it says...
So, it's open for public comment if there had been any though, right?
Yes, and, well, technically, it's either way. On the consent agenda, it's still open for public comment.
Okay.
If the chair, if the chair elects to, you know, to take public comment.
Sure.
But it's more a matter of, you know, when we put something on the consent agenda, that's a signal from the chair and I that we don't necessarily see need for a lot of discussion on it. And this one, I thought, was, you know, larger than it merits.
That's the reason I asked.
Yeah, absolutely, and also that the staff has vetted and gone through everything on the consent agenda. But I also think that at any point in time, any board member can hold any, anything that is on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
So, are you looking for a vote to support a grant application for exactly, for approximately 1.75 million dollars?
That's correct, and the specific vote is to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration.
I would so move that.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second to support that grant application for approximately 1.75 million dollars to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA.
And I would just comment, if I could, that I don't think there's any public comment requirement, because it's just a grant application.
And it's supporting the grant application.
Right.
So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, so, we are up to review and vote to approve minutes of our meeting's public session, June 21st, July 11th, and July 25th. Do we have edits to be made, or the edits that you want to pass down to the acting town manager?
I found this one to be very clean. There was only one item on page three. This is, now, I'm talking about the session on June 21st.
21st, yep.
The noon, 12 noon. On page three, in the third line down, it says, "The town manager with have," I think that's "will have the right to respond." That's just, that's, that's the only item that I, so, with that, I would move approval of the minutes of Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, and release for public access.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will approve and release. Yes.
I'm just a little slow on the draw there. Is this the hearing, the one o'clock hearing?
Yes, well, it was 12:00, actually.
Well, that was the first meeting, the one o'clock hearing. There was just one comment that was made by our council that the comments made by town manager were not taken under, what do they call it, under oath?
Under oath.
I think that should be reflected in the minutes somewhere.
I do not believe that that...
That didn't happen during that meeting.
It didn't happen at the hearing.
That was, that was somewhere else.
No one mentioned it at the hearing.
No, but I'm just saying, it's a fact that it didn't happen.
That doesn't have to be recorded. It didn't happen, it wouldn't...
You can't, you can't write into the minutes something that didn't occur.
Okay, okay, good, fair point.
But, and, yes.
I mean, you could, but you'd probably get in trouble for it.
Good, that's a good point.
I see your point. But your point is that it didn't happen, and you were perhaps trying to say it needed to be recorded somewhere, but it's recorded that it didn't happen, because it's not recorded in the minutes.
Good point. Okay, thank you.
The best way I can explain it. Okay, July 11th.
July 11th, I have an edit on page eight. That's the only one I have, yeah. If you followed under my comments there, attended the Rotary Club of Falmouth Day of Play and triathlon, it's not the Rotary's triathlon, and the Falmouth triathlon is how it should be worded, just to make sure that it's sponsored by an entirely different organization. We just happen to support it.
Right. Also, in that same section further down, it says, "Open Cape Summit," and it should be One Cape Summit.
It's One Cape Summit, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so, with the amendments to the July 11th minutes...
I would move approval of the July 11th, 2022 minutes and release for public access.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Much cleaner this time, thank you.
Yes, well done. Okay, we are on to July 25th. We didn't get...
We didn't get those.
That's right, we did not.
So...
We will hold those. Okay.
All is so far.
We're almost caught up, though.
Yeah, we're doing well. Okay, town manager supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to mention a couple of grant awards. The Marine and Environmental Services Department secured a Seaport grant for 60, about $61,000 for design of improvements to Simpson's Landing. The intent is to apply for a second grant for construction funding when the design is completed.
We did approve it.
You're all set, Barbara. It's approved.
Yeah, you're all set. We're good.
Oh.
Done.
It's done.
I'll tiptoe out.
Yes, you're all good.
You're so early. That's, I thought I was in good time, so, apologies.
Take care.
All right.
I would like to acknowledge that Mark Kaspersik, our Conservation Land Manager, was recognized as the Service Partner of the Year by AmeriCorps Cape Cod.
Woo-hoo, right.
And continuing on a theme of good news, this week's curbside collection of trash and recycling, I'm pleased to say the number of complaints is way down, certainly not perfect. We got, you know, one homeowner called that her trash barrel was missed, but NOSIT does seem to have caught up, and here's hoping that they continue the improvement that we've seen in the last couple of weeks. I also want to mention, it was, Anjalee Scott Price touched on it earlier, the rollout of the 96-gallon carts to residents has been very successful. 21,000 carts have been delivered, and Public Works has received concerns from 50 households who do not want to use the larger cart, but 50 out of 21,000 is actually a very small number. So, that's, so far, the acceptance rate seems to be very good, and I do want to make sure that it is understood, certainly by the board and the public as well, that the select board will be providing smaller recycling vessels, particularly for those with disabilities or folks who are unable to physically manage the larger carts. And that is by request, because what, we did want to deliver them by default to just about everybody, because they're a lot easier to manage than they look. They're very well-designed. Sandwich Road paving, the first segment of the road has been resurfaced, and I was pleasantly surprised by how little traffic disruption there was. There's another segment underway this week, and I intentionally came to work through that construction to see what the delay was like, and it was about five minutes, and backup wasn't too bad. So, that's a very important roadway to get improved, and it is being done this time of year because of, in the fall, there's, there are problems with the large number of buses that come through Sandwich Road.
Schools.
Also, the contractor, Lawrence Lynch, has much greater availability to concentrate resources this time of year. Everyone competes for them after the summer season, so it's sort of a, a new approach that Peter McConity is attempting this year, and so far, it seems to be working quite well. The board has received a number of expressions of concern via email about the auto camp, and I just wanted to mention that. And I would start by saying that I do want to assure the board and the public that the Board of Health has taken very significant enforcement action, and their actions assure that we do not have untreated septic that is going into the groundwater and making its way into the waterways. They have limited the amount of effluent that can be discharged. It's only going into the one, the one tank, sorry, the one leaching field that is intact and functioning properly. There's a second leaching field that's damaged and not being used until it is repaired. And there's further monitoring and testing that's being required daily by the Board of Health, so they have taken that seriously. They're, they've taken appropriate enforcement action. The interests of the town are being well-protected by the staff and the Board of Health. Also, I did want to mention, I know some folks have drawn a connection between the past issues that the auto camp has had with their septic system and the beach closures, the water quality testing that we've had at our beaches, and the, the opinion of the, our health agent is that those two things are, there's no evidence to tie those two things, and if you look at the amount of effluent that has come from residential septic systems, and including many of which are not even Title V, and even the Title V ones have no denitrifying, which the auto camp, when it's properly functioning, does have a denitrifying element to it. So, you look at the volume of effluent from residential and the number of years that it's contributing to the groundwater, which ultimately makes its way to the estuaries, in all likelihood, it's the combination of that multi-year history and the tides and the extreme high heat that is the cause of the bacteria, of the high bacteria counts. Now, we don't have a conclusive study to prove anything, this is just, you know, what sort of the best, the folks who are best informed on these issues are saying about the current status. And again, I want to close on this topic by just emphasizing enforcement is being taken seriously, and if they're not able to comply, it will be shut down. At this point, they are complying with the regulations.
Thank you. Select board member reports. Mr. Patterson?
Want to start?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I, the one thing that I did attend was the One Cape Summit, and I have to say, I already complained to Peter that I didn't see any staff there at all, and that you heard my comments from Karen Polito, our lieutenant governor, that, you know, regional awareness and proposals are taken much more seriously than those from individual municipalities. Wealth of information, and there's no way I could give you a dump that would go over and justify it, but I do, I think there was so much that was covered, there's no way I could give you the details, but, you know, a highlight, two highlights that came through on the affordable housing, and affordable housing probably covered three-quarters of the agenda items and the discussions. And, you know, Jay Coburn, who's the director of the Outer Cape Community Development Organization, had a quote that really stuck with me. "We can't afford to lose the people who can't afford to live here." And that's really where we are, you know? We're going to have a tough time staffing fire, police, teachers, healthcare workers, if we can't make housing fall within their ability to own and rent. I mean, it is really, and that was really the master discussion. Dan Wolfen, owner of the Cape Air Organization... Dan Wolfen, owner of the Cape Air Organization, and Dorothy Severese had their little one-on-one discussions to talk about the region as a whole and the challenges that we were, were struggling with. That, and of course, the wastewater issues, trying to preserve our, our, our environments and what attracts people here and what makes Cape Cod very special is the big thing. And then, but one thing that did come out that was kind of a, a highlight in my mind was that the Association for the Protection of Cape Cod, in the form of Andrew Gott, who was the Director, and Alicia Magnati of Housing Assistance Corporation actually got together and came up with a study that figured out where it would make this sense, make sense to hold, to have the most density in, in terms of affordable housing and making housing more dense therefore more affordable. And, and they've actually done a study, and it's online, and it's actually called growsmartcapecod.org. So they have a...
Growsmart.
Growsmartcapecod.org, no spaces except for the dot.
Okay.
And I, I have the flyer, and I would like to pass this to Peter so he can maybe show, share it with...
Is it grow or growth?
Growsmart, G R O W, smartcapecod.org.
Could we ask, that, could you make, just ask Diane to make copies of that and throw it in our mailboxes? It looks like something we all might want to look at.
I agree with you, and it's a nice little synopsis, and, and the two had a little discussion, Andrew and, and Lisa, and they basically said, "You would think that our two organizations would be in competition with each other," but he said, "We, we felt like we could get together and come up with a common understanding of how we could both meet each other's needs." And of course, they're, what they're doing is targeting those areas where we could put wastewater treatment in if we haven't already done so, and where it just makes the most sense to have greater density. You know, one of the things they said is that we really should be thinking about relaxing our, our zoning restrictions to allow height where we can put in multiple, you know, apartment units and do it on a scale that makes it economical in terms of constructing. So these are things that were brought up and everybody's facing, and it isn't just Cape Cod, but we see it in spades because we have the seasonal economy and we have people coming in here just to support our businesses, which are really essential, you know? So anyway, that was a part of it. There was one other person from, Angie attended the first day, I, I want to give her credit for making it there, but Joe Fa, I guess it's Failey, from Woods Hole Group was there just to pick up information that he could use in, in addressing some of the issues of our waterway, I think it's the, the beach nourishment issues and the, you know, and the resiliency of our coasts and what have you. So at least one other person from Falmouth made it and took advantage of all these incredible resources that came and made presentations, so. But it was very well done, you know, I've gone to them in the past, and this one lived up to it. But I do feel like we need to get more staff there. I was very disappointed that we didn't have anybody there from our planning department, and certainly would have been nice to add our housing coordinator there, but I know people's lives are complicated and they can't always free up the time, but it's an opportunity missed in my mind. And I, and I want to just connect that to what Lieutenant Governor Polito said, which is, "We'll take you far more seriously if you're coming at us from a regional perspective than if you're coming at us one of 351 municipalities in the state." And so these kinds of Cape Cod Commission opportunities to talk together about what we have as shared challenges and risks just makes sense. And so I hope that next time this comes up, and I'm sure there'll be another one next year, that more people from Falmouth can go and benefit from the resources and help us. Oh, the last thing I wanted to mention was, one of the things that was mentioned, there was a complaint from one of the municipal leaders about how long it takes to get a project through.
To get what?
To get a project through. And one of the things that was shared, I think it was by Dan Wolfen and Dorothy Severese, is you have to get the planning in place or you don't get anywhere. So planning is such a critical piece of doing these very complex projects. And so, you know, we've done really well. Our, our Water Quality Management Committee has been excellent. Our past DPW Director, Ray Jack, was excellent at forecasting our wastewater treatment issues and our freshwater treatment issues. So we've had people doing planning either from a committee perspective or from a stamp, but planning, it really is the critical piece that starts these processes, and it may take a while, but when you can use your plan as a way of making this thing doable, you've got a chance of seeing it through, even if it takes a while. But if you can't get the right planning in place, you're just waving in the wind, you know, you're just not going to get anywhere. And so that, that came out of this summit as well, so.
Madam Chair, would, would you mind, could I just respond to that briefly?
Sure.
I, I, I do want to, you know, first of all, echo Sam's sentiment that the opportunities to learn from our peers and to learn from the Cape Cod Commission through the One Cape Conference is extremely valuable. This is the first year that I missed it, and it was because of my exposure. And I, I want to let the board know that our housing coordinator came to me to initiate her attendance at that conference. She registered and was unable to attend due to a personal emergency, and the town planner would love to have been there, but he's been short-staffed since he took over the position, and he's just, you know, he felt he was too overburdened with his immediate priorities to take time out for this conference. So it, there's no lack of desire or appreciation of the value on the part of staff, and you can expect their attendance in future years.
Thank you. Ms. Scott Price?
So I won't say too much more about the One Cape Summit. I did attend the first day. I got a lot of really good information, especially about affordable housing, as Sam said, and I passed most of what I've, what I've received and contacts along to Peter to share with Kim and with Jed. This weekend Nancy and I both attended the Falmouth Heights Merivis and Neighborhood Association, and there's a lot of questions about Mayflower Wind. There wasn't a lot that we could provide because we don't have a lot of information, new information. And we did get a lot of really good questions, questions that were legal questions that we definitely couldn't answer, and some others that just need some research. So it was nice to be able to bring that information back directly from the people who are, you know, potentially most impacted. So we have plans to bring those to Peter and Maura this week and ask them to do research on those questions and report back. Lastly, I sent you all an email today inviting you to my PEP symposiums this week. There's one on Thursday, one on Friday. The one on Thursday are the PEP II researchers. Those are my PEP alumni who are back in Woods Hole for another research experience, and they have partnerships with the Falmouth Public School, so they're going to be presenting their scientific research along with what they've been doing with their school teacher, and hopefully have whatever project they've worked on with their school teacher implemented in the fall. One of my students actually is now part of a HUI fellowship starting in the fall, and so the project that she worked on this summer, she's going to be able to actually implement in the classroom when she comes back in the fall, which is pretty exciting. Then on Friday, my PEP students, those are my undergrads, are presenting their research at MBL starting at nine, and I specifically put three of the presentations together right after the break that I think town, staff, and you all might be most interested in. One of them is a presentation on the Coonamessett River, so one of my students is looking at the restoration process and how that has affected the, the water quality in that area. Another one is looking at Little Pond, and my students have been doing research almost every summer since 2015 when the sewer ring was put in, so they've been looking at long-term study of what the sewer ring has done to that pond. And then another one has been working with Buzzards Bay Coalition doing citizen science, so getting local people engaged in the science that Buzzards Bay Coalition does. So I hope that you all can attend, it'd be great to see you all. We will have lunch, that I've included a count in case you all are available to stay for lunch, and if not, they will be recorded and posted on the website, and I'll share those later.
Awesome.
That's... Yep.
And they are available by Zoom also.
Oh, yes, and it's also available by Zoom, yes.
Which is great.
I don't know if I mentioned it, prior to our last meeting, I did attend the tour of the base. I don't think I told you that. I don't think I did. So it was very interesting. We get to see all the firing ranges, we get to see the simulated firing range, indoor firing range, and the, we get to see all the water filtration plants where they're running the carbon filtration and all the systems that are operating that. But the most interesting part, of course, was the range proposed to be the machine gun range, and I was sort of familiar with it, but it was great to actually see it in person. And they're just really widening it, and the, the initial construction is not taking down a lot of trees. It's only the future extension of the range, which would take down the, the real majority of the trees, and that part of the project might never even happen. So I don't think that was really made clear to us. We were talking about 170 acres of trees, but it's more like 60-something that would be taken down in this first phase, and then whether or not the second phase even gets funded is, you know, questionable, because the guy was explaining how many different projects there are across the country and the limited funds, it's, it's not very likely that the second phase would even happen, so I think that's something the public should be more aware of. And on Saturday, I attended the North Falmouth Village Association's first annual Porch Fest, and what a great community event that was. They had six venues, different houses on, along Old Main Road with different bands. One had traditional Irish music, one had the local band On the Rocks, so something for everybody. And I mean, I felt like, I even commented to my wife, I didn't know there was this many people in the village. The place was packed, people were everywhere, everybody was just, you know, it was really nice. Good time.
Thank you. I just have one tentative date that I want to put out to the select board. I may be calling a, a meeting on Monday the 15th, so it's tentative right now, but I'd like you to put it in your calendars just in case. It may include an executive session as well as an open session, and I will get back to you on that.
That's August 15th?
Uh, yes, it's next Monday.
I will be away at a conference.
Okay. Thank you for letting me know.
It's like a six o'clock start?
Uh, or earlier, maybe earlier, maybe a five. I will get that out, it's just a scheduling issue and whether or not we need to do it. I think we will. I just want you to plan ahead, and that's all I have. Anyone else?
I may not have taken my time at the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to bring everybody's attention to, yesterday was the, the anniversary, the 11th anniversary of a Cape Cod Navy SEAL's demise in Afghanistan. He was a local kid, Senior Chief, sorry, Kevin Hudson, and it was kind of a tough day for a lot of Navy guys on, on the Cape. It was 11 years ago yesterday that he lost his life along with other SEALs on, on an operation called Extortion in Afghanistan. So I knew him as a little boy, and it was, it was tou, it was a tough day for a lot of us yesterday, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to, I do have a commitment at six o'clock on Monday the 15th, so if we do meet, could it be a little earlier?
I will do my best. If not, we will still have a quorum.
Okay.
I would prefer earlier too, but...
Yes.
I have five o'clock.
I do prefer earlier, especially on these sort of odd, and I'm sure that I, I will do my best to make it earlier. Okay, future agenda items, anything anyone wants to make sure that we take a peek at?
I would like to talk about the sewer ring of East Falmouth again. We're talking about housing, and it's the number one need, and I would like to have the board consider filing an application with the county for ARPA funds for design of that sewer main.
Can we do that in our strategic planning meetings?
I guess so. When's that, when's that going to?
There, we have this, you have the schedule. We've got some Saturdays coming up.
Okay.
It's on the back of the supplemental.
Yep, yes, it is. It's right there. Saturday, the 27th, Saturday, September 10th.
All right.
So that's just a suggestion.
Sure.
Makes sense.
Like to get it started, you know, sometime soon. If we can put, will there be an opportunity to vote then if we come to consensus, or?
I don't know that we'll vote, but we'll see how far we get.
Okay.
Anything else in terms of agenda items? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.